No, I'm unmuted now. It won't let me start my video. It says that you cannot start your video. Oops.
Good, even I'm also getting the same message for the video.
And now you can hear me too. Thank you, Michelle. Oh, technical difficulties. Hi, Mark.
Hello.
You also growing a mustache, Mark?
Am I also? I had one last month because it was no shade November and I decided to keep it, so.
I don't think I saw it last month.
Well, it probably wasn't long enough yet.
Yeah, well, I'm also.
It's also gray. It's also gray, so. But usually by this time, well, usually by the end of November, it drives me crazy enough, I just save it, but I thought I'd keep it for a while.
She thought you'd keep it. Well, Tammy must like it if it's still around.
Tammy doesn't care.
Oh, cool. Well, I have, I far prefer my husband with a beard because he will not maintain a shaved face and then it's just not. Don Johnson was the only person I think that could really rock that scruffy. Anyway, it is 6:30. We're gonna get started. I want to call this meeting to order. And before we go any further, we were deciding how to vote and it seems like the best way to do it on webinar is to raise your hand. So if you look at the bottom of your screen, should be like participants, Q and A, share screen. And then raise hand, if you would just raise your hand so I can see that your hand is raised or that you're able to, that would be great. I see Barbara's, I see Mark's. Looking for Andrea's, I see Andrea's and that's it. I don't. Jackie's gonna try to make it. Now, if you click the same button again, you can lower your hand. And there we go. All right. First up is our citizenship award. Are they here?
I see Mr. Garner's an attendee, so I think Michelle will try to pull him in.
Okay. Excellent. First time with this new software.
Can you see me?
Uh.
Yes.
I can. I just have to get to you. Hi, Rick.
Hello, how is everybody?
Pretty good. Hope you are.
Doing well, thank you. Um, well, I, I will just talk about Audrey here real quickly. She, she knows she won. I, I talked to her last week before we went away for the break. She wasn't 100% sure that they were going to be able to swing it this evening to be a part of the, the board meeting tonight, but I'm happy to share a little bit about Audrey. Audrey is a senior at Elmira High School. She probably, I'll be perfectly honest, she's probably the best office aide that I've ever had in the, four years that I've, I've been there. She's, she's kinda, you know, we've got, we're lucky enough to have her a couple of times actually during the day and, I think if you asked Mandy Story, our secretary, she would consider her, her right arm when she's in there. She's the kind of student that, you know, she's very friendly. She's, she's always respectful when she, picks up the phone and talks to it to lots and lots of parents. She's actually, she's our, she's in their first period and so, you can imagine the number of absent phone calls she takes in the morning in terms of, parents calling in to say that their student isn't coming. And she handles those calls like a, like a pro. And, and just does a really, really nice job. Over and above that, she's just a, she's a great student. She's a really hard worker at school. She also is just, you know, she's just really kind of what we, we hope our, our students at Elmira High School represent. She's, she's friendly. Tell that she cares about other kids. And she's just a very, she's just a great representative of Elmira High School and, you know, and I'm lucky enough to get to see it every day with her in the office. So she's a very worthy recipient of our citizenship award tonight.
Well, excellent. Good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry she couldn't be here, but I'm glad to hear you've got good help. I think I may have spoken to her and, and seen her once. I'm usually if I come, it's during that first period if I have to pick something up and, all the students that I've seen in the office have been pretty helpful, but, but I do remember, I think I remember her.
You may have noticed her, depending on when you came, she would have been the one rolling around on a, on a scooter because she had, she had hurt her ankle, so.
Oh, gosh, okay. I hope she heals quickly. Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Moving on, Michelle, would you be able to scroll down? Perfect. I understand we have at least one letter of public comment.
Sorry, different controls. Have to find me. Yes, let me check. Just one moment.
Okay.
Sorry, I have two letters of comment. The first one was submitted by Trey Hackett from Growing a Future. Dear Fernridge School District Board members, I'm writing to you on behalf of the Growing a Future GAF School Farm located adjacent to Elmira Elementary School. I'm writing because like you, we want to see the students in our schools succeed. And we've seen firsthand the powerful impact the school farm programs can have on students' academic and social emotional success. Since opening the doors of GAF School Farm in January of 2021, we have been able to provide farm tours to over 400 K through five students and their teachers. The school farm also played an important role in the summer school program and curriculum. We have provided summer internships for 11 students from Elmira High School. These students learned a wealth of skills and knowledge from farming, marketing, food handling, service, social media and character skills that can be applied to future education and other life goals. They also expressed feelings of joy, satisfaction, pride and accomplishment as a result of their work at GAF School Farm, while also earning a stipend. The school farm also provides opportunities for students to contribute community service time they can apply to their resume. A valuable asset to college-bound students. Students moving directly into the workforce and students pursuing volunteer opportunities. We've also provided engaging hands-on farm activities for over 250 students in grades K through five. These activities included planting sunflower seeds and visiting the farm periodically to see the progress of their work. We are looking forward to and preparing for providing richer and more diverse experiences in the near future. We are acutely aware of the time and energy burdens on our valuable teaching staff over the last two years. Within that awareness, we are currently working on developing a curriculum to bring activities to K-5 students in their classrooms with all the research and materials already available and ready to go. Elementary school classes are always welcome at the farm and our classroom curriculum plan is designed to bridge the gap of equity for the students and classes that might not have the opportunity to visit in person. At GAF School Farm, we are committed to providing a link to the Fernridge community as a whole. We are preparing for the possibility of providing volunteer opportunities for experts and neighbors alike. In the spring of 2021, we provided opportunities for CSA memberships to 12 families. Each received a variety of fresh organic produce and fruits and vegetables from the GAF School Farm. We plan to greatly increase the number of CAC memberships in 2022. Thank you for your support in celebrating our successes. We look forward to continuing to build partnerships with the students and staff of Fernridge School District.
Thank you. And you said you have another one too.
I do. I have a second one.
Okay.
Dear Fernridge School Board, please allow us to introduce ourselves. We are the Fernridge Community Alliance Group comprised of several parents, former employees, community members and joint partners with other local groups throughout the Fernridge District. This group was established due to much concern throughout the community with the direction the school district is taking and even more concerned with the lack of communication and transparency coming from both the school board and the superintendent. We've reached out to the board once before to acquire more insight from each member, but received no specifics in response. It is important to note that our group also speaks with one voice. Individualizing members is unnecessary at the moment. The main concern is the district's impatience to appease unpopular policies over allowing parents, guardians and employees to make crucial decisions on their own accord or for the children that they are responsible for. This is not only damaging to those individuals, but it is also creating an irreparable rift within our community's environment. It was brought to our attention that superintendents within the state had been notified that vaccinations are likely to be on the list in order to register for school in the next school year. If this is true, we would appreciate the school board to not only verify accuracy of this new alleged mandate, but to allow early notification and open discussion with all parents and guardians sooner rather than later. Parents slash guardians should be the ones to make this decision, not public school officials. Public school officials should not deny education or school socialization to any child based solely on their vaccination status. According to the World Health Organization, these vaccines are still in trial stages and recommend children only who are at high risk to be allowed vaccination. And then there's a link to an article. Young children need exposure to germs in order to build their immune systems. We know this as a scientific fact. But that we do not yet know is the long-term side effects from these ineffective vaccines. It should be noted by now just how ineffective they are by all of the breakthrough COVID cases that have happened at the district since the enforced employee vaccine mandate. To the elected school board officials, what harm does an unvaccinated person pose to a fully vaccinated person? If one were to believe that the vaccines work? Can you explain the school's policy as to why unvaccinated high school students who were around a fully vaccinated student who fell ill with COVID must quarantine, but the other fully vaccinated students do not have to? How does this not create segregation and bullying? Another issue that seems to be more of a hindrance than a benefit is the required use of masks. Ask any one of the district's elementary school teachers about the importance of being able to visualize pronunciation and being able to interpret facial expressions in the development stages of a young child. Mask wearing does great harm, not only to the development stages of younger children, but also to the older students trying to achieve physical competitiveness, competitiveness among their peers. Students are failing physical education tests solely on the fact that they are struggling to breathe. According to a recent study published by CNBC, cloth masks are only 37% effective against the spread of SARS-CoV-2 infections. Whereas N95 masks provide a 95% effective rate at filtering out virus particles. And there's a link to an article. If the district was serious about stopping the spread of COVID-19, then why are cloth masks allowed and why are N95 masks implemented as the only mask to be worn? These are simple questions that deserve to be answered by the school board as we expect the board to speak as one voice. Parent concerns are growing with the direction our school district is taking because what we are witnessing is not progress by any stretch of the imagination and it is doing irrefutable harm to the children. This is an excellent opportunity for the district to show its willingness, openness and transparency within the community that it serves to reassure everyone that Fernridge School District is willing to encourage discussion on tough subject matters. Simply ignoring the existence of opposition is not only unhealthy, but will carve a deeper rift within our community. FRCA looks forward to your cooperation and suggests any and all communication to be sent to this email address.
Thank you, Michelle.
Um, Michelle, um, so I'm realizing that, uh, I, I need to be able to read both the statements because I, I'm apparently not able to, track just audio.
We'll be emailing them out.
I'm sorry?
We'll email them out.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Um, many, almost all of the items that they're asking questions about don't fall under what the school board is supposed to actually do. They fall under the purview of the superintendent. Gary, would you mind? I don't know if you received that as well. I did not, but Michelle, if you could forward that to Gary. Gary, would you mind responding to that email and then copying in the board?
Uh, yeah, I will. What is today? Today's Monday. By end of day Wednesday, I will respond and CC the board chair.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, moving on to monthly items. Uh, we need an approval of last month's minutes. Thank you, Michelle, for pulling those up.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. And next agenda item, I keep trying to click on your screen, Michelle. I just need to keep my hands off the mouse. There we go. Are we, oh, we're down to the enrollment report already. Moving right along. Quana, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm at home, so I wanted to make sure. All right, this is our enrollment report as of December 1st. Our total elementary enrollment is at 602, which is 25 less students than projected in the budget. The average class size at Elmira is 22.5 and 21.85 at Veneta. The middle school has 291 students enrolled as of December 1st, which is 27 less than projected. And the high school is at 407, which is 32 less than projected. So overall, we are down 84 students from our budgeted numbers. And compared to last year, we are down 40 students.
Okay, thank you. That doesn't require board action, but the financial report, which is also you, is coming up.
Correct.
Take it away, Quana.
All right. So we started receiving our tax revenue, as you can see, and it's coming in as projected. We've received 53% of our revenues. The same time last year, we had received 54%, so we're very similar. We've spent 27% of our operating expenditures. The same time last year, we had spent 26%, so we are very much in line with last year, within 1% of both. Um, our 2021 financials have been audited and I've received the draft. And so next month, I will be presenting that at the board meeting and that will take board action. And that's all I have unless someone has questions.
Oh, I've got my hand up because I forgot to lower it. I don't have a question. Um, any questions or comments? Looks like we're right on track.
I move that we accept the financial report as written.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, oh, not four, five to zero. Four to zero. I can't see myself, so I'm just counting the hand. Sorry, Jackie's not here yet, right? I don't, I don't think she's gonna make it tonight. All right, so motion carries four to zero. Uh, moving on to the reports, superintendent's report. Gary, I think that's you. Oh, I'm gonna lower my hand also.
Oh, me too. Sorry.
Okay, just a few things to go over. Not a lot. A reminder that we will return to in-person board meetings in January. I sent out an update around what that will look like. A little later in the meeting, we'll be updating and having the second reading on the public comment at board meetings, what that looks like, both in person and virtually. The board meetings will be here at the district office. We do have, as you know, capacity restrictions when we post the, announcement for the board meeting, it'll have that number on there. If more, if, you know, we ever got word that there was gonna be a large crowd, we could obviously move the board meeting to a different school. And absent that, we'll have someone kind of in the, in the lobby that manages when we're full. And if people are, haven't been able to get in, wanted to come to the board meeting, that were actual speakers, we can send them in at speaker time, one at a time. As you know, rarely do we get a board meeting of more than two or three people, but it does happen occasionally and, we'll just have to address it while we're in these limitations of, of COVID, but we will return in January to in-person and we'll be doing it simultaneously, virtually, so that people can attend and not be in person and still participate fully. Any questions on any of that? Uh, just really quickly touch on the, I've, Tiana coached me up. It's Omicron variant, so hopefully pronounce that right. May have heard last week that there, you know, OHA and, and other health organizations have kind of put out a lot of information that has modeling that is not very positive, that expects some significant virus spread. Significant numbers of folks are getting ill in January, so we'll just have to monitor that. But essentially insinuated that it could affect in-person instruction. So we'll have to see how that goes. We will, you know, keep folks surprised. If anything changes, our hope is obviously to have in-person instruction every day all year long. But from what I've read and from what I've heard, it's concerning. So we'll just have to stay on top of it in the weeks to come. Really quickly, I gave you an update on Friday and I actually talked to the Oregon Community Foundation today. We've had a, I won't mention who yet until it kind of gets finalized, but last week met with a gentleman from the community and his family. They're interested in donating nearly $400,000 to the district to establish a scholarship that will be focused on the trades. So really exciting. Again, I talked to Oregon Community Foundation today. They're gonna reach out to the family in the weeks to come. More information, but obviously, super exciting. This will be the third one of these in the last three years that are perpetual, they're fully funded. And just a tremendous resource, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and see how that goes. OSA reclassification got finalized last week. It's now official in 2223. High school will be in the Mountain Valley Conference League. The league consists of us, Crestwell, Harrisburg, Pleasant Hill, and then Sisters and Lapine. So it does bring in two longer trips. But the good news is there's also now lots of local folks outside of our league that we could play in non-league contests that would be for a, like Junction City, Cottage Grove, for example, if we wanted to, that are, that are shorter trips. So that'll start next year. That is a done deal. Then the last thing I wanted to mention was, just take, take a minute to thank, over the recent weeks, I've worked with building administrators and our union leadership. We came up with a good list of things that we'll begin implementing in January to support our staff in different ways that will allow us to maintain our current calendar. You probably have heard or noticed that, you know, most, if not all, the other districts in Lane County have allocated staff additional time. Just with all that they're dealing with and our staff could certainly use that as well. However, I think they acknowledge the extreme hardship and difficulty, that that's not good for kids. And it's difficult on families. If we were to identify, hey, here's five school days between now and the end of the year. And, you know, we're not gonna have school on these days to allow folks to get caught up and things that they need to do. So implementing those has allowed us to come to an agreement that we're gonna maintain our calendar. Now, as I talked about earlier, the Omicron variant might change that if we end up with staffing issues, but absent any, you know, huge surge in, in illness or some change in direction from ODE, our staff has agreed to maintain our school calendar. And I think it's a, it's a credit to our district staff, so I just wanted to acknowledge them and I appreciate that very much. That's all that I have to update you on at this time.
All right, thank you. Um, moving on to the, any questions or comments, I guess, for Gary before we move on? All right, moving on to the second reading of the proposed policy updates. And these do require board action and. And these do require board action and I think we can vote on all three, is that correct? Can we do, vote on all three at once? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So I'd make a motion that we delete and replace BDDH and then also approve BDDH-AR.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments, discussion? Hearing none, I call a vote, all in favor of the motion stated, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Personnel report. Is that Gary?
No, just need to make a motion to approve it.
Oh, we just need a motion to approve it, I see, okay.
It looks like we have, we have two resignations, one retirement to approve of our certified folks.
I move that we accept the retirements and resignations as noted.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call a vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries four to zero. And non-licensed personnel report. Resignation, new hires. And some resignations of coaches, alright? And this does not require board action, is that correct? Any questions? Alright, going back to the agenda. Any late items or closing comments?
I just, I was gonna mention that I'm looking, since we didn't have a conference this year, I'm, I'm gonna possibly, depending on if I have time, maybe attend the Northwest Leadership Seminar, which is in Portland, it's something I have attended in the past, it's mostly public service people that attended, law enforcement, fire, telecommunications, that kind of stuff, but it's not necessarily specific for that, it's just a leadership conference, there's usually speakers that, in the past, there's been three to four hundred people there that attend. Maybe even more than that, so I can send the board information on that, or at least a link to the website if you'd like and and if you have the time, usually it's very, very good, the speakers they bring in. And it's kind of just the bigger, there's not breakout sessions, it's everybody in one big, huge conference room up at Jansen Beach in, in Portland, so.
And when is that, Mark?
It's in March.
March.
Yeah, I think it's in like the first week in March, maybe, or something like that.
Yeah, if you would forward that information to the board, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you all the link to the website and you can check it out.
Okay, thank you. OSBA has offered a number of really great things for board chair development that I have been attending. One of which is a board chair cafe, is what they call it, we just, we meet during our lunch hour one day a month. And it's kind of school board chairs from all over the state and we talk about issues that our districts are facing and kind of how, how we're dealing with them and there's a moderator that, Vince Adams, who is, works for OSBA and he loves what he does, he's really into board development and he keeps track of things that come up that we want to follow up on next month and that's been real helpful, but some of their webinars have also been really helpful in kind of guiding my understanding of what we're supposed to be doing here. So I, it's, you know, there are opportunities out there, both virtually and, and apparently in person in March and Jansen Beach, did you say, that sounds like it's probably a lovely place, so.
That's actually, that's just the name of it, it's just on the, it's on the Columbia, but.
Oh, okay, so there's some sand and some water.
I've never actually seen the beach, but there's a bridge that goes across, but.
I think there's big rocks.
Yeah.
Shoreline, not much of a beach there.
It's a Red Lion, I think, is the hotel, I don't know, I'm not sure what it is, Red Lion or something like that, and it's Jansen Beach, that's just what it's called, I don't know.
Okay, well, thanks for the information, I'll look for that in my email, any other late items or closing comments? Alright, uh, meeting adjourned.
Have a great holidays.
Yeah, you guys as well. Thanks.